I'd like to call the meeting to order for the January 9th, 2018 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
First item, are there any questions on the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
None, thank you.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes, I've got a couple. I'm looking at item number four, talking about the encroachment by the Irvine Companies Project, Coronet Omar Plaza. I was looking at that wall, and I know that if I was on the planning commission, I would not vote to approve that wall. That's pretty harsh up against the back of the sidewalk. They ought to have at least left us a couple of feet for landscaping. I think they ought to take the whole wall out. Probably not going to happen. I just wanted to point that out. They didn't get approval ahead of time. I'm not happy with the wall, but I'm not going to make them take it out. So I was just making a point there. Mr. Mayor. Item number six, the sound monitoring. I wouldn't mind getting a little staff report when that comes up tonight. And then the questions I've got on number seven. The staff report didn't really say what the difference was in the actual contract cost, and they're suggesting that we award the contract to the second or the highest bidder rather than the lowest bidder. So I'd like to know what those dollar amounts were and why they're not recommending the low bidder. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So would we like staff to answer those questions now?
Now or later is fine.
Mike, you want to come up for that item there on Roberts? Or, yeah, I guess Dan could too.
The initial pricing difference was, believe Ware was $375,000 and Roberts was about $110,000. But after the, we had received the proposals, we did take some of the trash cans away and put them in the new Mariposa Agreement, the ones that were in parks. So we reduced the number of containers that they have to collect. So we basically negotiated with, the price down with Roberts.
But you're saying the price would have commensurately gone down with Ware as well? So the difference was $35,000 a year generally?
Probably yes. I would assume that would have gone down with Ware also.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Piattar?
No, I'm still waiting for an answer as to why we're recommending the high bidder rather than the low bidder.
So I can start to comment there because I asked purchasing the same question. The staff team that analyzed the two proposals believed that the submittal from Ware, the technical aspects of the submittal did not measure up to the required scope of work as well as the Roberts one did. In other words, we felt like they didn't have the best handle on what the job entailed. This is a pretty labor-intensive job. Not to say Ware couldn't do it, but at least in the proposal level, we felt like the better proposal was presented by Roberts, who is also the incumbent. So you can understand why they know the job very well. Just as a reminder to the public, this is the role of replacing, pulling out the bags and replacing them with liners in every one of our commercial area, public trash cans, and our beach street end trash cans.
So for instance, all around Babo Island, you've got the trash cans at the street ends, and they have to take out the bag with the trash and put in a new bag. Doesn't sound very technical. I don't understand why there was a technical issue.
Basically, the Ware proposal did not discuss a work plan. It didn't meet the requirements of the request for proposal. And they didn't explain how they're doing it, scheduling, staffing, et cetera.
So it was just plain non-responsive to the RFP?
Yes.
And so we basically only had one bidder then? One responsive bidder?
We didn't call the Ware proposal non-responsive, but, you know, we accepted their proposal. But yes, it was graded lower accordingly.
So when you get a proposal like this that's non-responsive, you end up with only one bidder. Is that because everybody assumes that the incumbent's going to get it and they don't bother to submit?
Not at all. I did talk to other trash haulers about why they did not, you know, the larger ones. And I was told that this is a type of service that because it is so labor-intensive, you know, it's performed 365 days a year, and gets real busy in summertime. And again, it's driving up to a can, changing at the liner, driving to the next one. The other haulers aren't interested in bidding for such a service. Frequently, when a city has an exclusive contract for the whole city for commercial and residential, this gets thrown in, or they're told they have to do this as part of the agreement. But voluntarily, they don't want this type of work.
So they're just not staffed or equipped to it?
No, and there's not, their costs are so much higher that it's not real profitable work to do.
So are you convinced then that Ware could not, excuse me, could not do the job? Or that if you signed the contract for the dollar amount, that they would not be able to perform, or that you would have to provide all sorts of extra management to make sure they perform? I mean, $35,000 a year times five years is starting to talk about real money.
Right. They didn't exhibit, they didn't have any history of doing, you know, this type of work. There's a little bit difference doing businesses and doing bin service than doing this. They didn't have any, you know, experience. And in the work plan, they didn't exhibit any understanding of the work. It was kind of a, they gave us basically a boilerplate proposal with a cost.
But they would have had to sign a contract saying that they would do whatever service for that cost. And it just seems to me that you either aren't getting competitive bids, or you get a competitive bid from a reputable company, and you don't think they can perform, so you give it to the next highest bidder. It just seems a little out of the ordinary. Am I reading this wrong, or what?
Well, we feel like we got, the Roberts bid was competitive. Again, as Mike explained, the Ware bid lacked substance. But, so we feel like, our purchasing agent believes this was a fair process, and that we have bids that we can present to you that are fair bids.
All right. Thanks.
So you also spoke of item number six for a staff report. Would that be something we'd want to get through during this question period?
That would be best to do tonight. I know I always make the city attorney nervous if we delve too into these. We're happy to do a presentation tonight.
And, Mr. Mayor, all I'm asking for is that, you know, this is an area that the public is really interested in. I think it'd be worth the time to make at least a brief staff presentation on what we're doing.
Understood.
Thanks.
So, back to any questions on the consent calendar. Mrs. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five, when it comes back this evening, I'd like, since this is an item that are an approval, a project that was initially approved with the prior council, and several years ago going through all the necessary public agency approvals, I intend to pull it just for that purpose, just to have a recitation of the approval process, and if all things are copacetic.
Councilmember Dixon, it's appropriate that you raise that issue. I was going to ask the conclusion of this, that, to inform you that we're going to continue that item. We have a legal issue to work through with it. So a staff's recommendation is to continue it. We could certainly attempt to answer your questions at the same time. It's up to you.
No, that'd be fine. Okay, that's fine, and when it comes back, I presume. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon?
I have none. Mayor Duffield.
I am sorry I skipped Mr. Herdman.
I have none.
Thank you. And Mayor Protim O'Neill?
None, thank you.
And I have none. Next item is a proclamation to the Pacific Life's 150th anniversary with Jim Morris. Please come forward. Or at the, sorry, the microphone. So I am going to read this proclamation, and then you can speak afterwards. So, there are a lot of wherethes in here, and it's all very worthy. But since I'm going, I'm the mayor, I'm going to suggest I've chosen the best ones, if you don't mind, because this would take a long time. So, this proclamation to the Pacific Life Insurance Company, whereas during the past 33 years, the Pacific Life Foundation has given more than $100 million to nonprofits and community service efforts, reflecting the company's commitment to the communities where its employees live and work. And whereas, Pacific Life remains dedicated to fulfilling its promises and building the financial futures of hundreds of thousands of customers, and continues to be a significant community member in Newport Beach, employing more than 1,200 employees. And whereas today, we celebrate Pacific Life's anniversary in its next 150 years of empowering the success of communities and future generations of customers. Now, therefore, I, Marshall Duffield, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby congratulate Pacific Life Insurance Company on its 150th anniversary. So we'll go down here and, oh, excuse me. Would you like to say a few things?
Well, I just want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for the proclamation. Greatly appreciated. We'll proudly receive it, display it in our home office on Fashion Island for all of 2018, as we celebrate our 150th anniversary. Newport Beach has proudly been our home since 1972, and the city has seen us achieve a lot of growth, and supported a lot of growth of the company over that time. Today, we're the Fortune 302nd largest company. We weren't in the Fortune 500 at the beginning of this decade, so the city has seen and supported a lot of growth, which we appreciate. And then lastly, you touched on our philanthropic endeavors. I'm joined here today by Tennyson Euler. He is the person in charge of our national branding, so he's a whale of a guy. And he's also the individual who's the president of our foundation, and that has driven a lot of the support that you mentioned. And recently have approved two grants that will be letting the city know about, supporting the Newport Beach Public Library and the city's CERT program. So again, he and I will warmly receive this proclamation and share it with our, on behalf of our employees. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And while you're walking over there, I just want to point out that the whale is still the same original whale from 150 years ago. They live a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could provide a brief introduction, this is a relatively new, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a relatively new tradition that we believe is appropriate to kick off both the new year and the start of our budget season. With a regional economic forecast and update, our guest speaker, of course, will provide some context of the broader U.S. economy, but we've asked him to spend the balance of his time on the state and local economy. Just keep in mind that the forecast is from a macroeconomic level. It's, we're not going, we'll delve deeper into individual businesses in our finance committee discussions, which we have one coming up this Thursday at 3:00 p.m., where we'll dive a little deeper into our top three. Our guest speaker, as you mentioned, is Dr. Robert Kleinens. He is the executive director of research at Beacon Economics, and is one of California's leading economists. He has 30 years of experience analyzing the U.S. and California economies, and its many diverse regions within California. So he did his master's and PhD at USC, and has his bachelor's from the University of Michigan. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kleinens.
Very much. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thanks for having me here to talk about the economy. When you think about the local economy in Newport Beach, it's, whether you're looking at taxable sales or property tax, or any borrowing that the city has to undertake, each of these areas are affected by the national and state conditions as well as local conditions. So what I'd like to do in the next fairly short time period is talk a little bit about the national and state picture, and then move into what's happening in Orange County and in Newport Beach. I don't know if any of you remember KFWB, but it was, "You give us 22 minutes, we'll give you the world." Okay? That's what we're getting to. As far as the U.S. is concerned, I often feel as though I'm interpreting the headlines that many people read, and so here are some headlines that have shown up over recent months. People are concerned about whether or not we're headed toward recession. We've got an economy that's, an expansion that's fairly long in the tooth. We hear often about the nature of California's housing crisis. We recently saw the tax cut plan was passed by the Congress. What kinds of impacts will that have on the U.S. economy, and in turn, the local economy? What kinds of impacts will that have on the state of California? I'm not going to be able to answer all of those questions in my presentation. We're leaving some time for questions if you want to get into the nitty-gritty on some of those areas. But when I look at the national economy, it's a little bit like going to the doctor, looking at the vital signs of the economy. I relate GDP growth to the basic heartbeat, that labor market is the pulse of the economy, and the inflation rate is like, is like blood pressure. So anybody who goes to an annual physical knows that we're just looking at the vital signs of the economy, very much as you would look at your own vital signs when you're getting a checkup. And so as we do a checkup on the U.S. economy, 2.2% growth is what we expect for last year. You can see in the figure on the left-hand side that that's about where we've been, plus or minus, for several years running. That's really the capacity of the U.S. economy to grow. When you figure out, you take a look at its labor force growth and growth in productivity, somewhere around 2% is the long-term growth rate that we expect for the U.S. economy. In recent years, we've been counting on the consumer sector to contribute the lion's share of economic activity. You see that on the right-hand side in the table. So out of the 2.2% growth in 2017, 1.9 came from consumer spending. You think about that in local terms, we're talking about retail sales activity showing up, not just in terms of going to shops, but also going to restaurants, tourism from around the country that comes here to Southern California and Newport Beach in particular. Investment spending turned around in 2017. It had a lot of drag on it from the energy sector. We're finally expecting in 2017, 18, and 19 to see business investment pick up. A little bit more on the others in just a minute. Net trade, you know, we're approximately 60% of the containers that go to the rest of the country come through the ports here in Southern California. Trade's very important here, and as our economy has done better, we've been importing more. As our trading partners' economies have done well, we've seen exports improve. So that's another important part of the overall U.S. economy, and it does affect us here in Southern California. And government spending, as I'm sure you know, has been mixed, but at the macro level, when you account for U.S. state and local spending, it's been about flat, not really making much of a contribution to the U.S. economy. So the U.S. economy is expected to grow by about 2.2% when all is said and done in last year's GDP report. We haven't gotten the final quarter yet. And for this year, a little bit faster growth is expected. We're working presently to account for the effects of the tax cuts in U.S. economic growth and our outlook for 2018 and beyond. We're not quite done with that, but that will feed into the revenue forecast that will finalize a little bit later on this month and deliver to the staff. Inflation also expected to grow in the neighborhood of 2% in 2018. It was a little bit over that mark in 2017. 2 seems to be the magic number here. So the labor market and job growth in the U.S. as a whole has been a little bit less than 2% the last couple of years, and we expect about 1.5% growth in 2018. The vital signs, in short, of the U.S. economy are good as we look at it as we enter 2018. Now, let me back up for a second. You can see that the unemployment rate has fallen. We're down at historic lows as far as the U.S. unemployment rate is concerned. And on the right-hand side, you can see that job growth has slowed to 1.5%. As we look to the story for Orange County and for the rest of California, it's pretty much the same story. We've seen a slowing of job growth as we've reached full employment. So we can only grow as fast as our labor force increases. That's true for Orange County, for California, and for the U.S. You can see on the left-hand side that both California and the U.S. have seen a dramatic slowdown in job gains over the last couple of years. And over on the right-hand side, you can see that Orange County down at the bottom has slowed markedly from better than 3% growth in 2014, I should say, from 14 to 15, to just under 1% growth in this past year. These are not signs of an impending recession. It's just that we're hitting the limits of growth as dictated by the growth of our labor force. And in fact, the labor force in Orange County actually declined in 2017. We've got an unemployment rate here in Orange County that's among the lowest in the country at just about 3%, lower than our partners in other parts of Southern California. The black line is the California unemployment rate. So Orange County's position is much better than that of other parts of California at this time. Coming back for a moment to the limits to growth, this shows national labor force growth, which has really slowed in the last year. And the labor force participation rate, these are all terms that get batted around in the news, and there was some concern about the labor force participation rate in years past, that people were discouraged, workers who had left the workforce during the Great Recession and were slow in coming back to the workforce. All of that is history at this point in time. The labor force right now, its dynamics are really driven by what's happening with the boomer generation as they exit the workforce, and what's happening with the millennial generation, the successive generations, as they enter the labor force. And you can see that in 2017, these are national numbers, the labor force participation rate in 2017 was just under 63%. We expect to be right around that number for the next several years. No surge in labor force will help us to get to a higher growth path. And that's not only true for the U.S., it's just, it's also true for California and for Orange County. It's just that we don't have official numbers at the county level that I can share with you. So we're looking at a situation going forward where we will see slow growth in the Orange County economy, but it's not indicative of a possible recession. It's just that, it's as if you get to your cruise speed on the freeway, and you put yourself on cruise control, and your engine goes into, or your transmission goes into overdrive, and you just cruise at that rate going forward. We have a lot of job openings, record-high levels of job openings. So that's a sign that the economy is still looking to grow. It's just that we can only grow as fast as we add people to our workforce. In Orange County, we've had something of a mixed bag over the last couple of years. We had growth across all sectors for many, many years as we came out of the Great Recession. But as you can see in this figure, the leaders at this point in time are construction, leisure and hospitality. So here we're talking about tourism, as well as eating and drinking places. Other services relates to personal services, like getting your hair done, getting your nails, taking care of getting your car serviced. And it also relates to growth in jobs in the nonprofit sector. Education is self-explanatory, but that is private sector health, private sector education. And so we're seeing gains in these areas, and jobs are really the most fundamental indicator of the health of the local economy. We are seeing losses in manufacturing, but that's not unique to Orange County. All of California has seen job losses, and in fact, even with these job losses, this sector of the economy has gotten more efficient, and continues to be a significant player both in the state and in the Orange County economy. I might mention that, it wasn't mentioned in my bio, but I was at Cal State Fullerton teaching for several years, during which time I had great opportunity to really do an in-depth look at the Orange County economy, and many people would be surprised at the strength of the local manufacturing sector and its presence. Anyway, so this is what we're looking at as we move into 2018, a little bit of a mixed bag in terms of job gains. When we look at Newport Beach, this is employment for the people who live in Newport Beach, so that's why it's called resident employment. Down, I should say up at the very top, we're looking at a 1.3% year-over-year increase from 2015 to 2016. These are the latest numbers that are available. And so I would expect that if we were to shift forward to 2017 and 2018, we'd be looking at growth rates that are just under 1%. That's for the Newport Beach base of jobs across these sectors of the local economy. And so on the right-hand side, you can see that the job count for Newport Beach have been roughly stable over the last several years. An overall indicator of how well the economy is doing is taxable sales. So on the left-hand side, you can see that both LA and Orange County have been tracking positive over the last several quarters. When you do a deeper dive and look at taxable receipts, you can see where the growth is coming from for Orange County, mainly from autos and transportation. We're also seeing some growth occur, I should say mainly from restaurants and hotels. We're also seeing growth occur in autos and transportation, fuel and service stations, which are rebounding from low energy prices of recent years. If we were to look at this for Newport Beach, it would be lined up with autos and transportation as number one, restaurants and hotels number two, and general consumer goods would be number three. Okay. And Newport Beach's taxable sales came back strongly in the wake of the Great Recession, but over the last several quarters have been increasing by about 1% when you go over the course of the years 2015, 2016, and 2017. So we're looking at steady but slow growth in taxable sales. Let me correct that. It's 2016, 15, 16 fiscal year and 16, 17 fiscal year that it was a little bit less than a 1% growth rate. With respect to housing, which of course affects property tax collections and assessed value, Orange County was at the head of the pack when it came to recovering from the ailments of the housing sector during the Great Recession and its aftermath. And so at this point in time, we're looking at somewhat slower sales, up 6/10 of 1% year over year in the month of November, with an increase in the home price. I'm looking at the year-over-year change that is smaller, with the exception of Ventura County, than these adjacent counties. It really has a lot to do with the fact that Orange County's prices tend to be higher, and that it's ahead of the curve relative to other parts of Southern California and the state as a whole. Newport Beach has a median price of $2.2 million as of the most recent quarter, which is the third quarter, and up by a very hefty 20%, 22% in fact, year over year. So it has certainly bucked the county-wide trend. And the figure on the left-hand side also shows sales, which has essentially been flat over the last several quarters. We don't have a lot of time to get into the nitty-gritty, but the housing market really is not operating normally at the present time for any number of reasons. A lot could be done to improve it, but I'll just have to leave it at that for now. There are a lot of things that could go better in the housing market. It's not like it's a problem. It's just that it could be doing much better this far into an economic expansion. You can see on the right-hand--
Excuse me, Doctor.
Yes?
Mrs. Dixon?
Mr. Dixon.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. So in Los Angeles, Riverside, San Bernardino, San Diego, Ventura, sales prices are declining? Is that what that trend--
Month-to-month, yes. The month-to-month, M-to-M is month-to-month, and so that's a seasonal drop-off from October to November. We have a peak season where home prices typically rise from about June through September, and then they go horizontal or maybe dip a little bit roughly from September through February.
Oh, I get it. All right. I was looking at it too quickly. So it's the year-to-year that is obviously significantly rising, and that's what we're reading the headlines about, the cost of housing in Southern California?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm happy to go into greater detail on that during the Q and A. Do you have a specific question?
No, I just caught my eye when we were on that slide just a short time, and I saw the negative numbers, but obviously the year-to-year numbers are what the striking numbers are. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you. Building permits for residential in Newport Beach, as with any other jurisdiction, are very bumpy. We call these kinds of things large and lumpy activity. And so you can see that you've got a couple of spikes there in multifamily activity. We're actually, I would argue that forecasting residential permits is one of the most hazardous things that a regional economist can do. So we do have a forecast for you in our outlook for Newport Beach, but you can see, just looking at that figure, that it's a very volatile part of the local economy. So with respect to the high home prices that were mentioned, affordability has been falling. This measures the percentage of households that can afford to buy the median-priced home, and so it's fallen somewhat. The reason it hasn't fallen more is that we've got low-interest rates that have not only stayed low, but at times have edged down over the last year. And so consequently, whether you're looking at Orange County or other parts of California, the affordability impact hasn't been nearly as substantial as you would expect, given the high home prices that are around here. Rents also have been on the rise, and yet, in more recent years with wage increases, the rent burden has not gotten terribly worse. So you can see on the right-hand side that the rent burden, the share of wages that goes to rent for Orange County is at 34%, which is very much in line with many other parts of California and Southern California in particular. We, as I said, housing's not normal. This figure on the left-hand side shows state building permit activity. We just have not seen a recovery in the single-family part of the market. We have seen a recovery in the multifamily part of the market, a recovery that was led by Orange County just a few years ago. Relative to other parts of the state, you look at the new population relative to permits, and actually, Orange County is doing fairly well, 2.8 new persons per permitted unit. But there are other parts of the state that clearly are in worse shape than Orange County. And that really is attributable to the fact that it was ahead of the curve in new home construction, especially multifamily construction coming out of the Great Recession. I'm going to skip this in the interest of time. On the non-residential side of things, we have vacancy rates for offices as well as industrials edging down, with Orange County having one of the most favorable markets relative to other parts of Southern California at this time. Tourism's an important part of the local economy and the Newport Beach economy. It drives, among other things, your transient occupancy tax. And so we're seeing that on the right-hand side, the hotel numbers for Newport Beach are good, the highest of the average daily rates of the markets within Orange County. And the RevPAR, which measures the amount of revenue relative to the occupancy rate, is also the highest of any of these markets in, sub-markets in Orange County. Passenger traffic through the Orange County Airport has leveled out some in these last several years, but it's still at an elevated and healthy rate as far as the big picture is concerned. So we roll all of these economic indicators into a variety of models that we use to project assessed valuation, so that's based on property values, taxable sales based on, which in turn drives the sales and use tax collections, transit occupancy tax, which of course is tied to the tourism and hotel activity, and then building permit valuations. So looking at the first three of those rows, you can see a fairly steady trajectory is traced out with a little bit slower pace of increase for assessed value taxable sales. Looking out into the latter part of your planning horizon, which is a five-year planning horizon, we will be delivering, these are preliminary in the sense that we still have to finish our impacts of the tax changes at the federal level on these forecasts. But when we deliver the updated forecast a little bit later on this month, these will be extended to the year 2022, '23 as well. And then, as I pointed out, forecasting building permit valuations is a very dicey proposition. You can see that we had a very strong year in 2016, '17. This year, 2017, '18, with a 14% increase, looks to be the second-strongest year on the books for Newport Beach. And then we expect a sort of a reversion to the norm in the out-years. So this is really the trajectory for the revenue streams that you'll expect to see over the next several years for your planning horizon. So with that in mind, I think I'll just recap some of the observations made. Steady growth at the national level. In turn, the same would be expected for the state of California. I didn't talk much about California, but there are a lot of good things to say about how it's performed in the last several years. The leading industries locally will be healthcare, construction, leisure and hospitality. To a lesser extent, here of course, transportation and warehousing. Real estate continues to be a front-and-center issue for the state and for Orange County in the sense that we're not really building enough. And I want to finish by reiterating the fact that while we expect to see slower growth in jobs, it's no sign of recession. It's just a sign that we're bumping up against our growth limits at this point in time. So on that note, I'll say thank you and take any questions you may have.
Mr. Avery?
Thank you for that report. What in your mind would be the biggest threat out there from an economic standpoint? And do you have any thoughts as to what could possibly--
No single threat stands in, stands out in my mind. When we look at the precursors or the things that would give rise to a recession any time, and certainly over the next several quarters, we look at things like spikes in energy prices. Well, that's not going to happen. At least, we don't expect it to. When you take a look at the price of a barrel of oil, looking out over the next, say, eight to 10 years, it's expected to stay below 75 and probably fairly close to the $50 to $60 range. So no spike in energy prices is expected. Another possible threat to economic activity and what might cause a downturn is some sort of inflation spike. Well, that's typically tied to a spike in energy prices, and we do not expect to see an inflation spike. We are very watchful of what's happening with interest rates, because the Fed's trying to move short-term rates to a neutral position with this Fed's funds rate that he wants to get maybe to 2.2 to 2.5%. And at the same time, the global markets are keeping long rates low. And so that could cause some tension if we find that the Fed's effort to move this policy rate closer to a market rate for longer-term yields, that may cause some upheaval in the market. But I mean, I think that that also is not something that is necessarily going to tip the balance in favor of recession if it's managed properly. So these are the kinds of things that we look for. We also look for any kind of sustained disruption or imbalance in, you know, what's happening in asset markets and so on, and it really doesn't appear to be anything at this point in time that would suggest a concern about possible recession.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Neill?
Sure. One of the things that we had seen at our last Finance Committee meeting was a discussion about how we're doing compared to what our revenue assumptions had been. And it looked like property tax was about stable, but sales tax and TOT, at least on the revenue collection side, was up from last year but lower than the revenue assumptions had been. So would you mind going back a few slides--
Sure.
--to the revenue forecast summary? When we're looking at the budget coming up, one of the things that we're able to do on the expenditure side is use these figures as a revenue assumption. So I'm curious, when we're looking right now, for example, transient occupancy tax makes sense, because we had a couple of hotels that either expectedly or slightly unexpectedly went offline more than we had anticipated. But the sales tax number, I mean, that's fairly low, and so I'm curious why you project a 5.4% increase in sales tax for '18, '19, given that Amazon and online sales seems to be continuing to dominate the discussion?
So much of that really hinges on the composition of, or the sources of taxable sales in Newport Beach. And so with autos and transportation being a significant contributor, a few of the others that I had mentioned earlier, those will tend to drive those numbers. And behind that, what we have is a healthy economy with good job growth, what we expect to be better pay increases for wage and salary workers as well as for anybody else who's not a wage and salary worker but may be running their own business and so on. So those kinds of underlying assumptions about the health of the economy are going to sort of drive us back to, at least through 2018, '19, what you could say is the high point in terms of the growth rate. And then we would, you know, I'll be honest with you, when we do projections, the time horizon that we feel pretty confident over is about a 24-year, 24-month time horizon. Then the crystal ball gets a little bit murky, and it's beyond that where you tend to see that the trajectory's edged down a little bit. And anybody who tells you that these forecasts are going to be spot-on, you have to know it's just giving you a line.
Yeah, and that's fair, but that, for us, I mean, the revenue assumptions built into the budget--
Right.
--are important for us to understand why those, they are. So I agree with you, but I still need to understand what, when we're talking expenditures, and we're seeing an increase in expenditures, particularly salary benefits, et cetera, we need to make sure we're accounting for the revenue assumptions as well.
These revenue assumptions or the rates that you're seeing here are actually somewhat lower than what were presented previously.
Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just to pick up on that last comment you made, a year ago, you or one of your colleagues spoke to our meeting before, and the assessed property assessed valuation number was, in addition to the sales tax number, was signaled as a trend that could potentially be concerning because of the decline. Do you want to speak more to the assessed valuation and how that is going to ramp up perhaps this year, but it's going to be steadily declining?
The, so assessed valuation has a lot of inertia built into it, because it's less reliant on new construction, it's more reliant on your existing tax base. And so that will, by and large, that's going to appreciate via Prop 13 by a very modest amount over time, right, by 2.7%? Maybe a few other factors roll into that. And so it's expected that that's, then what adds to that are actual sales of homes and so on, of existing homes as well as new construction. And so we're expecting that when you take a look at existing housing versus new construction, there should be strength, given the strength of the economy over the next couple of years, with a trend that is built in that shows that this is going to slow in those out-years, those three remaining years. So is that--
Well, specifically in Newport Beach, just the aging population, the high price of real estate, and these assessed valuations that have risen steadily for decades. I just recall that there was, one of the takeaways last year was slight downturn that would, over time, potentially be concerning as one of our, the bedrock of our revenue source projections.
So that's not happening right now, as evidenced by both what you're seeing here and also the fact that home prices continue to rise. But I think what we need to look at in the bigger picture is you have a lot of properties that are highly-priced properties that are held by boomers, maybe people who are older who at some point will be selling those properties, and the real question is, will there be someone to buy that?
Right.
And that's a very hard question to answer for a given community. We think that there will be sufficient loft in the market to keep things from dropping, but timing is everything. And so if you've got, I'm not trying to be alarmist or anything like this, I'm just saying that, you know, you have a lot of boomers right now who are hanging on to these homes, and then at some point, if they choose to move out, then we would be looking at, looking for people who would be able to buy those. We're finding that a lot of boomers are aging in place. And so what might have been a likely scenario in past generations is, seems to be less likely here at the present time. And by present time, I'm looking between right now, out, maybe the next 10 or 15 years.
Okay, thank you.
Wish I had a harder--
A crystal ball.
Yeah, a harder number to--
You wouldn't be here tonight if you knew better numbers.
Former mayor, now regular councilman Muldoon.
Thank you, special mayor. You have some great numbers, I see, on tourism that are city-specific, but it looks like the retail and housing is more county and some retail actually being forecasted. Do you have any more specific data about how the city of Newport Beach did and perhaps the city does as well?
With respect to--
With respect to holiday sales and retail locally?
We don't have holiday sales, per se, at the local level. Let me back up for a moment, please. We have, at the local level, well, with respect to, respect to the real estate market, the left-hand figure shows Newport Beach. So 2.2 million-dollar median price for a home in Newport Beach, and it was actually a 20% increase in that price, and sales increased by about 6% or 7% year-over-year in the third quarter of last year. If we back up to taxable sales, these are taxable sales for the city of Newport Beach, they've been advancing by about 1% in each of the last two fiscal years, after a good surge in 2014, '15. And then you've got the forecast, which is in that table.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Hurdman?
Yeah, I'm just curious about if you'll go back to that revenue forecast summary? I'm wondering if the variable of a number of boomers having their property in trusts and the trust moving the property forward to the designees within the trust is a variable that may be affecting this also?
Could be, but as was pointed out early on, we do a top-down sort of macro forecast, and then we use that to drive the individual components of assessed value and the property tax base. So given the methodology we use, I don't know that that would make its way in to the analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's nice to know that my category, manufacturing, is the worst-performing--
Just with respect to jobs.
--that you could possibly have. And I'm concerned about the construction. You know, we can't get an outhouse built here. We have wonderful people like the Skinners, and I mean that. I just am saying that we're very cautious about constructing things. So I wonder, at some point, we won't be able to build anything. But at this point, you know, I would like to just point out that I don't know how much longer we can continue to just provide services for everybody. At some point, we have to manufacture something. Some point, we have to build things and sell them, make things. And you have nothing to do with that, does nothing to do with this meeting, but I digress. I just am proud of what we do and make things from raw materials.
Well--
So someday.
Point of information, as a share of GDP, we, manufacturing is still about the same share of GDP, that's nationally, that it has been over the last, probably the last 30 or 40 years. So even though it's become more efficient, which has meant job losses, the sector continues to be strong. So if that makes you-- losses, the sector continues to be strong. So if that makes you-
Good. Well, respectfully, and thank you so much for your wise and sage information. We, we will use that to our best use. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, our next item.
Before you move forward, Mr. Mayor, a little public comment would be good.
Oh, sorry. You told me I would miss that, and you were right.
Public comment.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Duffield, and members of the council. Happy New Year. My name is Jim Mosher. I am definitely not an economist. I could not help noticing, though, how many times the word "growth" was spoken in the presentation, always as if it was an unquestionably good thing. I agree with the mayor that our society does need to build and make things, because we consume things. I'm less confident that in a stable community, growth is always something that you have to have for good quality of life. The logic of that has never been apparent to me. If we have a city of 80,000 people now, why our goal should be growing to a city of 800,000 people is not something I entirely understand. Regarding the forecasts and the cloudy crystal ball, I did have a comment about that. And if I remember correctly, Dr. Thornberg, when he gave the presentation last year, began his presentation by pointing out that predictions are always wrong. And that certainly is going to be literally true. If you predict the growth rate for next year is going to be 5.43%, if it came out 5.44, you're going to be wrong. So your chance of actually hitting the exact number is very close to zero. In that context, then, I'm wondering if econ- economics, who are paying for these forecasts, ever puts error bars on their forecasts, in other words, telling us that they have, say, 90% confidence, not that the growth rate will be 5.4, that it, but it will be between 4.8 and 5.6. And if they give us such a forecast with error bars, do they ever themselves go back and check that when they say something a year from now will be that way, they actually are correct 90% of the time, that they are within that range? I think it would be useful for us to know those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none. Any more comments from the council?
If I may?
Yes.
Just to respond to Mr. Mosher's comment, I think all of us might remember a quote, President Harry Truman, do you remember this famous quote? When he was hearing an economist would say, "On one hand, we see this projection, on the other hand, we see another projection", and he said, "What I really would like to see is a one-armed economist."
That was good.
Thank you.
That's pretty good. Thank you. Okay, next item, which is our water quality overview.
Staff?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. We come to, to you today to talk about a topic that's really important to the city, the quality and cleanliness of our waters, bays, and oceans. And we were requested to give you an overview on this. So Mark McCohey Vich, our deputy city engineer, deputy director city engineer is here, and his staff, to give you a presentation on this.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Mayor, city council members, good afternoon. I have a presentation for you regarding our city's water quality program. I'm going to give a high-level overview, and at times, I'll dive, dive deep real quick, and, and we'll hit on many subjects. I want to introduce John Kapler and Jane Brookley in the audience, who are two key figures in our city's water quality program, who helped deliver many of the things that we're going to be talking about coming up here. Bob Stein is also part of that group, but couldn't be here today. So water quality, as we know it, actually encompasses many different areas. Water quality also includes drinking water, but we're not going to be talking about drinking water for the purposes of today's study. We're going to focus on stormwater, urban runoff, and our beaches and harbor as, as we know it. So these are the things that we're going to be talking about, and, and we'll go pretty quick. But, you know, water quality and the water quality program, it's actually very synonymous when you think of the city's, you know, economy, right? It, it takes years and, and years to develop and to improve, maybe like a, like a, like a generation of improvements. I think we have a good success story here to show, share with you and show, show you where we're headed and what we've accomplished. And, and everybody, I think a universal language when it comes to, you know, how are we doing, is a report card system. So there are two main systems out there. One's provided by the county healthcare agency, and the other one is Heal the Bay, another nonprofit. And again, it's a universal language, and for the last many years, in many of Newport Beach's beaches and harbors, we've been getting As. And it's exciting to hear. It's through a lot of efforts, and I'm going to explain why. And I'll share with you the locations that we have still yet to make improvements in. So the unfortunate thing with water quality is it comes with many, many acronyms. They are painful to remember, for, even for staff. And so we'll start with the very first one, NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Don't know who invented that, but anyway, so we're, we're stuck with that. And that's basically saying, hey, we want to get rid of these pollutants in our waterways. And these are the laws, the permits, the regulations. Most of it started back with the Clean Water Act in the 1980s. But it takes a system of, of staff, basically our public work staff, our municipal operations staff, our building inspectors, our code enforcement officers, our police officers, our fire departments, to be the eyes and ears of the city when it comes to water quality. And then from a nuts-and-bolts standpoint, here you go. This is, this is what we have to do on a daily basis. You're managing the program, but what does that mean? There's inspections that are done on these different sites, whether it's a commercial site or a construction site. There's enforcement, there's developing public outreach and education, and then there's annual reporting. Now, the city's a leader when it comes to water quality, and I think we should be very proud of that, too. It participates in, in many different levels. We have our very own city water quality coastal tidings committee, and we sit on these leadership roles because we want to let others know, and we want to make an impact that water quality is important to us, and our, our harbor and bay is important. So many of you are familiar with the city water quality committee. We have here our current members, Councilmember Avery and Hurdman are our current members, as well as some other familiar folks, like Mr. Baker in Houston, and Ms. Delman, Lou Denger, George Robertson, Fred Galuccio, and Carl Cassidy, all who have been involved for many years in promoting water quality. And I also would like to recognize, you know, our former members of the committee, such as Mayor Duffield, and, and Councilmembers Muldoon and Dixon, who are both on the committee for a few years as well, too. And then past council members, like, like Nancy Gardner, who's in the audience today, too, who've really put forth their effort. This is the think-tank group. This is the group that performs the reality check, you know, the, the advocates for water quality. And, and let me share with you some of the priorities that they're working on right now. Trash is probably the number-one thing that we talk about and we work on at the water quality committee. You know, we are very concerned with trash and how we can better protect our marine waters and pollutants. And, and the other thing is, is that the committee has spent a lot of time and efforts in, in partnering with, with UCI and trying to do public education. So at every meeting, we have a, a board that's behind us at, at every meeting, and has all of our goals and objectives, and we check those every meeting to see how we're making progress on those. And one comes off the list, we put a new one on. And I think we're making some, you know, good progress there, and I'll share with you some of those things. Now Newport Bay, as you know it, has a watershed. So it's kind of, think about this, 150 square miles of land drain into Newport Bay. So all the cities of Irvine, Tustin, Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, maybe not their entire city, but portions of their city drain into Newport Bay. And you can see why us taking a leadership role, because we're the receiving water, and how we partner with those other agencies is important. So the first committee that, that we have a leadership role on is, is what's called the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee. And it's a, it's a partnership with the county and these other cities. Currently, our mayor, Duffy, is on, is the city's representative, and Councilmember Hurdman is our, is our alternate. And so we work with our upstream cities to set goals and agendas, try to prioritize some projects and funding, talk about policies and initiatives. And it's helped. We've, we've, I mean, I'll share with you just a coming, the next slide here, as an, as an example, uh, sorry, red flag, TMDL, next acronym, Total Maximum Daily Load, another one that doesn't make any sense. But anyway, it, it's, it's measurements of how mu, how many pollutants are coming into the waterway. It's called a Total Maximum Daily Load. So you'll see this TMDL. Sediment's very important to us, and the city's been proactive in this front for the last, since the 80s. And, and as a region, we've been making good progress in this area. But I'll tell you, the executive committee, two years ago, and working with staff, staff, we came up with the idea to pressure the county to actually do some dredging upstream. And so right now, this spring, the county's going to be dredging 300,000 cubic yards of sand out of the upstream, you know, north of the 405 freeway, which will prevent sediment from going into the bay. Of course, we would have liked it last year, and they got 60, 60,000 yards last year. But, but the idea is, is what can we do from a leadership standpoint to try to catch the sediment before it comes into our bay? Because as we know, it's better to dredge it and remove it upstream before it comes into our bay.
That's okay. Councilman Muldoon?
Who's paying for that?
County, Orange County Flood Control Public Works.
Is there state grants involved, or they simply decide to create this new opportunity to assess Newport, or how did it source work?
So, so in this case here, too, they were able to, to develop and justify this as a maintenance project, and they were able to use some of their maintenance flood control money. So in each of our property taxes, we pay a fee to Orange County Flood Control for flood maintenance and protection. And so they're able to actually use that money for this, and it comes with the mutual benefit of removing sediment. So they get, they get flood protection, we get sediment removal.
You think it'll be an ongoing expense, or something they'll justify going forward? Or do you think this is a one- or two-time opportunity?
From an upstream standpoint, it, it will be ongoing, although the structural things that they've also put in upstream should reduce the amount of sediments actually coming in. So they shouldn't have to do as much, in theory, but it will be. Now downstream of that, in our harbors and bays, what percentage should they pay? Is that a project that's still yet to be worked on and negotiated?
Thank you.
Nutrients, too. This was a, a very important area, and it relates to algae in our, in our waterways, too. So again, like the county and the cities and all the partners work to reduce algae, and a lot of it had to do with, you know, coordination with upstream irrigation, you know, the use of fertilizers, too, you know. So when you fertilize your lawn, you know, back in the day, you could just let it go anywhere, it doesn't matter. But no, we, now we know better, that fertilizers actually create these pollutants that lead to water quality, water quality problems in our bay. Another area is called organochlorine compounds, which is basically are these legacy pesticides that, that we know as DDT and PCBs. All of these things have been outlawed for many decades, but they're still in the system. We still can measure them, we can still detect them. And so many years ago, or in 2007, the state and EPA formulated a TMDL to kind of regulate those. And we have a good program in place, and we're seeing, seeing progress there. And, and a lot of it has to do with we've stabilized the loose areas upstream, and the stuff that's already in the system is naturally going away. Bacteria, fecal coliform, too. Another one, too, this was another TMDL back in 1999. This was very important to us, too, because this is where, where we actually post the signs that say, you know, "Warning: There's bacteria in the water." You know, "This is not a good place for you to be." These are the ones we don't want. And we've, we've been able to remove a lot of the areas that were permanently posted for bacteria problems, and now we're down to just one area left. And let me show you. So just south of Newport Boulevard there, the area we kind of call Arches, right by the Turning Basin, too, it's our la, one of our last permanent posting areas where we still get routine bacteria hits in the water quality. And so we're working on that. The other ones around there, you can see those have been removed through our efforts. And this last one, we're working on, and, and here's a quick little diagram about what we're calling our Arches Storm Drain Diversion. So basically, we're going to take the storm drain, and we're going to divert it to the sewer system. And then the water there can get recycled, and, and then we can remove that bacteria from entering the bay, and we think that'll help water quality substantially there, and hopefully remove that posting. So two, about a year and a half ago, we were able to get a, a large grant, $800,000. The project is just about designed, we have to go through Caltrans to get our permit, and we hope to be in construction this summer. And that's just for the low flow, you know, under storm conditions, it would still drain through there. Selenium. Selenium's an interesting one, too. Selenium's naturally occurring. It comes from, it comes from the earth, you know, it just, it naturally comes out of it. But, but it impacts wildlife. And this was another TMDL, and you can see the three areas within our watershed which have natural selenium. And so we focused on our area, which was Big Canyon. And last summer, we were able to tour the ribbon-cutting of, of a big project we installed there to divert selenium into the sewer system and build a natural treatment wetland system up at Big Canyon, just south of Jamboree. And in the bottom right-hand picture, you can see we also have a diversion system that we built upstream in the Big Canyon Country Club Golf Course as well. So we've been making good progress there for selenium. Copper. Copper, and, and this is in regards to copper boat paints, too. This is an area that we're closely watching, and we're, we're concerned with, because we want to make sure the regulations are done correctly here. You know, copper boat paints, which are anti-fouling paints used on boats, are very important to the marine industry and to boaters, because they keep all the, the critters from staying on boats. And you have different agencies that are involved in that, and, and we know that these copper paints work very well for the marine environment, and that the agencies have done a good job of balancing what's the proper copper content in these paints. And what we do, what we're cautious about is, is entering into a new TMDL that overly regulates these things, where we know that they're actually getting better. So we actually did our own testing, and we found that most of the bay generally falls below the, the toxic rule limits. So you got the, you know, "Check the water, what's in the water," and it comes in under the radar. And then we look at, well, what's the toxicity? Do we have any fish that actually have this toxicity? And the answer is no. So we know, and we're really advocating towards smart regulation when it comes to these copper boat paints, because there are many things involved here, and we want to make sure that we protect, you know, not only the, the environment, but also our industry there, which is, you know, our recreational and commercial industry for, for boating in our harbor. Now, I, probably the next frontier where we're going to be spending a lot of our effort is when it comes to trash and debris. And I'll, I'll tell you, based on, on my own observations and checking with cities and talking to the grant agencies, Newport Beach has more of these diversion, what they're called CDS, deflector separation units. These are basically these trash catchers in the storm drain system than any other city. We have 40 of them installed. So you don't even see them, but underground, we have these basins that are collecting trash, and then our maintenance group goes out there and sucks it all out. And it's able, the trash is able to stay there even under a storm condition. So we are, are, are doing a great job there, too. And it's really important that we keep, keep these maintained and install these. We also have a screen program where we block our screens during the summertime. And then our street sweeping, too. A lot of cities only, only sweep every two weeks. We sweep every week here. And, and it, and it comes to the benefit of water quality in our, in our bay. We also have our log boom, which we've showed, shared with you many times, pictures of that, and trash skimmers in our bay. And we participate in, in a lot of different cleanup events to remove trash. Now our, oh, and when it comes to, you know, the, one of the largest projects that's in construction right now is a- in construction right now is a, is a cooperative project with the county to divert trash over at the Santa Ana Delhi. So there's two main systems that feed into the bay. One is the Santa Ana Delhi. And so this, you know, through the city's leadership and, and our Assistant City Engineer, Bob Stein, was really instrumental in this, too. When this came time to try to close the gap on this project and get it solved, Bob was able to, to get cooperation from Orange County Water District to make up a million dollars worth of funding to be able to build this project. And so now it's in construction, and, and it should be in service next year, fully in service, although we'll start seeing benefits as we go this year. And, and this is another one, we're pursuing a grant coming up next month. You'll see a city council item requesting your support for this, too. We'd like to put in a, a trash collection system to drain kind of this area of Dover Shores off of Polaris Drive, too. So this is what, one that's on our wish list. And then our major wishlist, wishlist items, our belt and suspenders is the trash wheel. It's a water wheel. It's a creative solution. We're in preliminary design and, and environmental design for it right now, too, and we've been talking to our upstream partners to try to get some funding support for it. Probably is worth mentioning, since, since 2002, we've been successful in getting, we as a city, over $19 million worth of grants to improve water quality in the bay. And that doesn't include dredging. How many, give me one minute. Oh, how much longer till we get this built? I, I would say we're still probably, we're definitely over a year away, because by the time we get all the regulatory permits involved and, and things like that. But this spring, we'll be able to share with you a design and kind of a more concrete project. But I think we're still a year away before we'll be able to get this in place. But if it were up to me, I'd build it tomorrow. But anyway. Okay, so Newport Harbor underwater cleanup. You remember this from last summer, too, another successful event the city partnered in, too. 1,100 pounds of underwater trash that was pulled out of the bay, too. And these are the things that we're excited to support, you know, and our key staff, like John and Shane, who participate in behind the scenes, and, and Chris Miller and our harbor operations group, to, to make a lot of these things happen, and we love these kind of partnerships. Two other projects that are in the works, too, is a, is a Bayview Heights, which is a drainage, a project to remove sediment into the bay, and then an infiltration project in Corona del Mar as well, too. These are projects who we have grant funding for, and we're just, again, it takes a while to get these permits from, from these regulatory agencies, and we're very close to, to getting those. I, I'll mention just very quickly our sewer system. We spent a lot of time over the last year talking about our wastewater system, too, but, and, and you all know how important that is, too, because how preventing sewer spills protects our, our bay and our water quality. So 200-plus miles of pipe that we maintain, videotape and inspect and clean. And then when it comes to our harbor, we have, you know, five public sewage pump-out stations, too. So those are very important to us. They require a lot of maintenance, because they're used by the public, they're, they're the, and so we test them often. This is just an example of a, of a dye test here, too. You know, all of these tanks have dye tests to, to make sure we, we detect a leak early and often, and then our mi-
Excuse me, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. On this, Mark, on the pump-out stations, I'm great glad we have them, and we're adding more. How do the users of them, are the mooring holders and visitors who are visiting to the city, is there, are they widely known? I guess that's question number one, so people know to use them. And is the prohibition not to discharge your sewage tank into the harbor, is that a regulation that is widely understood and known?
Actually, yes, thank you, Mayor. They are widely known. In our Harbor Cruising Guide, we actually have maps that show them all, and we point them to them. They're, they're in the harbor, and they're obvious. There's actually 11, there's six private ones, too, and they're also included in there. They're, they're maintained weekly. So, and it's not just the mooring users, it, it's our visitors, it's our, even our docked folks, they go over. I know just before the boat parade, we had a huge line, people were all getting ready and undoing. So everybody knows and uses them. They're very popular with the residents. I'm sorry, the visitors are also made aware of them. Our harbor operations group will direct them to them, that you can ask any one of them, and again, they're on our maps and our visitor guides.
So is there any way to gauge compliance?
To, to a degree, we show water quality samples in our harbor, showing that we don't have a lot of bacteria like we used to. I think our enforcement folks are out there, our, our harbor operations folks are directing to them. The fact that they're free is, is a good thing, it's just getting your boat over there. When we do have visitors, we do dye tablets still, and we check for their tanks to make sure they're in compliance. So we have a lot of regulations and rules, we're trying to keep people going to these pump-out stations.
Okay, good, thank you.
And just lastly on this, you know, bilge pump-outs, and another project that we're working on to install a few bilge pump-out stations in the city as well, too. I only have a few more minutes to go here. So water savings, too. So you may ask, well, why is water savings important when it comes to water quality? And the reason is, is that a percentage of water use that is used for landscaping and irrigation is converted basically to runoff. Overwatering, overspray, accidental, you know, car washing, whatever it may be, it turns into runoff. So whatever we can do to encourage conservation in a very friendly and positive way has a beneficial impact on our water quality. You know, turf, turf removal projects, you know, the city's participated in many of those. We've been, two years ago, we were able to issue many grants for those, but we actually were able to convert several of our medians, San Joaquin Hills Road and San Miguel, to remove turf and put in landscaping. And then also, some of our turf medians, we've been able to convert to recycled water as well, too. Now, public education and community outreach, another key, key area. So you may see the stickers that are on our catch basins on our curb that say, you know, drains to ocean, no dumping. So whether it's that, or when you go to the movie theater and you see an advertisement about, you know, protecting water quality, our advertising campaigns, which we participate a lot through the county, and then through our own little city efforts, are very important to us, because we know that trying to tell the folk, tell the public, you know, about water leads to the bay, the ocean begins at your front door, if we can connect that message, then we'll have better water quality. But we're not perfect. So here's a picture yesterday of Balboa Island, you know, where it's just, you know, somebody else will pick it up, you know, type of thing, too. And that can get frustrating. And I think, you know, again, through outreach and reminders, you know, whether a trashcan is there or not, you know, we got to do our best to, to pick up trash and remind folks that the ocean begins at our front door. And so we do that, whether it's through community surveys, our little, you know, outreach to the schools and, you know, contests and, you know, coloring contests, our HOA presentations that Sean and Jane are, and Shane are making often, our workshops, our billing inserts, rebate programs. So we're really trying to, to get the word out. And with the help of our Water Quality Committee, too, we continue to make progress on that. Harbor dredging, another priority of, of city staff, as well as the council and the mayor, too, because we know that dredging not only improves, you know, navigation, but the tidal flushing benefits improve water quality. And so this is a dredging map there, too, and you could see at the different depths how the water can move at different rates. And so we're, we're making efforts this year to pursue a larger, you know, harbor project. And basically, we're trying to pursue, you know, more cost-efficient way of dredging, you know, because we know that, that could help water quality, too. And the other important part is, is that could help bring the funding to help dredge some of these things, too, through their water quality approach. So we've already began our meetings with the Army Corps and, and with others, and we've begun to talk to our upstream partners as well, too. But this different method that we're looking at, and we're going to hear more about this, too. The idea is beneficial reuse, more cost-effective, more routine, as opposed to these very large projects. So we're, we're pursuing that as creatively as possible. So in general, I think we've made significant contributions to improve water quality. Again, it's probably like our, this economics discussion that we just had, too. It looks good, it's improving, the, the horizon looks good, too, but we have to stay diligent, and we have to stay at it to keep, to keep it that way, because it took a long road to get there, too. And I, in talking to folks, you know, people are excited about the current status of our water quality in the bay, it's getting a lot of use, and we want to keep chipping away at it and, and making that whiskey better, you know, and more refined. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Great report. Does anyone have any comments up here? I have one. I just wanted to thank John out there, Captain, for his hard work getting this, these grants. I know how complicated they are, and I do have the utmost faith that you will come through for, with all these things, the dredging and the trash machine. And I just wish it didn't take so long. But I can assure the dius, everyone up here, that I and others will be continually pushing hard to make this happen, our deeper harbor and a trash collection and the various other things we learned today. So we'll now go to, any public comments on this item? Oh, excuse me. We've got a lot to learn here. Councilman Avery would like to comment.
Just to thank Mark and staff for the report. My colleague, Mr. Hurdman, and I, last year, we served on the Water Quality Committee, and I, for one, I was just, every meeting I'd leave, just sort of awed by the amount of detail that the staff present and keep us up with, but also the members of the Water Quality Committee, the citizen members are, they are dogged in their, in their determination. And then the rotating lineup of special guests that come through, some are more consistent than others, but there's always 20 people in the room or more. And it is, it's really a great example of citizen engagement, staff engagement, and Nancy Gardner shows up, or Susan Skinner, it's just, but, and then it's, it's a big deal, but I think we're just so lucky as a city to, we've got great water quality now, but there's just such an intense drive to make it better, to just keep moving the needle. And of course, it gets more complicated and more expensive as we do that, but I think everyone would agree, our citizens, our public, you know, deserve that. And to have a reputation as having the cleanest water around, I think, is, is indicative of a city that really cares for its citizens and the public. And I'm just, I'm really impressed by the, the work of the committee, and especially, you know, Mark and John, Bob, Lucy and Shane, you know, it's just coming together like that, and that meeting lights off, and it's a lot of work to get it done in two hours, there's so much coming over the transom, as we say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you. I just, well, Mr. Avery just spoke exactly what I wanted to say. I chaired the committee for a couple of years, and thank goodness for staff and the good support that they've offered, and, and, and former council members, and Nancy Gardner's leadership. It's just to know that our city is working diligently to maintain our, and improve the water quality that comes into our bay and harbor. And one of the nagging, frustrating contributors of sediment and other problems is the upstream and dealing with the communities through the county that are contributing to our problem, and us, our having to find ways to mitigate that and pay for it through grants. Staff is remarkable in finding ways to pay for it. Very little of our general fund pays for these programs, so it's, it's really impressive. But we talk about with the economic report that we just heard, the, the quality of life in Newport Beach, our property values are all tied into the circle of life based on our water. And the emphasis, our water system, our harbor, our back bay, and our ocean, that we are giving emphasis, is really a fundamental driver to our economic vitality and the rising property values that are so important to sustaining our quality of life in Newport Beach. So thank you, staff, for the annual update to water quality. We can be very proud of, of what we do as a city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm the one who requested that this be in a study, be a study session item. I just want to compliment and thank Mark and, and staff for an excellent presentation. I'm, I was particularly desirous of having our viewers at home understand what we are doing in terms of water quality here in this city and the amount of work that goes into it. And I think you accomplished that very nicely. Thank you, Mark.
All right, let's go to public comments on this item.
Nancy Gardner. You were shown the project that's working at, on the Delhi Channel. It's not finished yet, but I was out there today filming, and already, even though it's only partially completed, you could see the trash being diverted. So there was a lot of trash that came down this god-awful water, it was, it just looked like oil, but it's already working. Yes, water quality is something we really, as a city, should pat ourselves on the back for, but you touched on it, Councilwoman Dixon, that a lot of it's upstream, and we have a new effort going forth by the Irvine Ranch Water District, something that did come out of some of our conversations from the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee, which is, they are applying for funds, Measure M and other funds, to conduct, construct natural treatment systems on several of the waterways leading into San Diego Creek, which is our major source of trash and everything else. So if they do get the funds, they will be doing that. I'm sure they'll look to us for some cooperation, but that's really good news, that there is a lot of cooperation trying to improve and, and maintain our harbor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none. I have a, oh, bring it back to any other council comments on this item. I just had one quick one, I think it's just eluded me, but I did want to emphasize what our former mayor brought up, upstream. I, I am very impressed, at first I wasn't, I thought they didn't do anything, but I have to say, they are very professional, and they are doing everything scientifically possible and economically reasonable to divert as much of the sediment and vegetation and trash that they can. And so I'm encouraged to continue to work with them, comma, bug them, to continue on with that work. All right. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield, and members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. Since I often make things difficult for the city government, I wanted to relate to you a recent incident of the city government making things extraordinarily difficult for me, which I think has public policy implications, as well as raising a simpler question of how you, as a city council, want this government to treat people like you and me. To understand this, you have to understand that most people, when they want something done by a government agency, go there or phone them, ask what they have to do, and accept whatever they are told. I am a little different, but I think not unique, in that I look at the publicly adopted rules and regulations and expect the government to follow them. When you pass a law that says two plus two is four, if a government official points to that rule and says it actually says two plus two is five, I don't think I, as a citizen, should have to accept that, and I think I should have a clear right to appeal such a strange reading of your laws to you, the people who make them. The case in point is my attempt to appeal to the Planning Commission, to appeal to you, the Planning Commission's December 7th approval of a coastal development permit for rebuilding a home on a bluff face at China Cove. Under the CDP approval plan that this council adopted in November 2016, which is now called Title 21 of our municipal code, that appeal should have been a very straightforward thing. Title 21 of our municipal code, that appeal should have been a very straightforward thing. Although I encouraged you to call that very sloppy decision up for review, a careful reading of your rules indicated that, to my surprise, any citizen could at no cost appeal any Title 21 decision to the next level of review, and in fact, has to do that if they want to eventually appeal that ruling to the Coastal Commission. To the best of my knowledge, city staff actually agrees that there is no charge for making a Title 21 appeal. But after I filed a free appeal, I was told that our city staff had discovered a mysterious catch-22 within your Title 21 that says that if I want to file a free appeal, I have to appeal every other decision under every other title of the code for which they do charge a lot. And the section that they pointed me to in Title 21 said absolutely nothing of the sort that I was told. When I made my best attempt to appeal that strange decision, I was brushed off in a manner that I will explain to you when I continue this story when you come back tonight, and I will suggest some policy changes that you may wish to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none. All right, we'll go to closed session. Mr. Harp?
Thank you, Mayor Duffield. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4A through C, including meeting with the city manager, Dave Kiff, assistant city manager, Carol Jacobs, human resources director, Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown, to discuss labor negotiations with those unions listed under Agenda Item Number 4A, meeting with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation by the unions and individuals listed under Agenda Item 4B related to Flores versus City of San Gabriel decision, and finally, meeting with legal counsel regarding litigation entitled City of Newport Beach versus Federal Aviation Administration.
Okay, thank you. We are now recessed until the 7:00 regular meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the January 9th, 2018, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor Duffield. In regards to Item 4C, which is the City of Newport Beach versus the United States Federal Aviation Administration, the city council is pleased to announce that it has unanimously approved a settlement agreement, was subject to final approval by the Federal Aviation Administration, fully resolved the litigation filed by the city against the FAA related to the FAA's implementation of the Next Gen Project, which is the one that changed the flight paths over Newport Bay, and relates to the airport. The city has prepared a detailed press release, which is available at the back of the room, and will be available on the city's website.
Thank you. We'll now have an invocation from Councilmember Hurdman, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilwoman Avery.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service as we conduct our business this evening and each day that we serve the people of Newport Beach. Thus we pray in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. City council announcements, these are non-discussion items and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Piattar?
Yeah, I've got an item for a future agenda. I would like to bring back the idea of people that pull building permits in certain neighborhoods would have to provide a construction parking plan.
That it? Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, I have a couple. Thank you, Mayor. First item, I think I have some images that'll pop up behind me momentarily. Speak Up Newport, tomorrow, Wednesday, January 10th. The topic is sea level rise and how will it affect you? And this is not about climate change, it's about very real, as you see in this image, very real situations when the seawalls overflow with king tides. And so, both Balboa Island and portions of the peninsula have been inundated with sea water during the winter king tides, oftentimes reaching up to a foot higher than the tide tables. And although not new, higher tides are occurring more frequently, and as you've heard, the public has heard, in the last year FEMA is reassessing our propensity for flooding across the peninsula, and we're looking at some serious studies to show that we are doing, creating, building infrastructure to mitigate against flooding. In any event, Speak Up Newport is presenting a forum with a panel, including Jim Campbell of our city planning department, who will describe what plans the city has for dealing with sea level rise and how it will affect city residents, and Robert Stein from Public Works will explain the projects currently underway, including the Balboa Island Seawall Project, and what the city will be planning in the near and long term. Additionally, two professionals from UCI, Brett Sanders and Joaquin Schubert, from the UCI team that's creating the hyper-local flood maps for Newport Beach, will, for our FEMA project, will present observations from their studies. So it should be informative, we've had a lot of questions about this, and this is tomorrow, free, hosted by the bungalow, free refreshments, and of course, free parking. Next item is the Finance Committee. So if sea level rise and water flooding is not your interest, city finances could be. So please encourage, I always encourage members of the public to attend our Finance Committee this Thursday, January 11th, at 3:00 PM in the Crystal Cove Conference Room. And item number three on the announcements is get ready and start thinking about all the wonderful foods you're going to be eating during Restaurant Week, which begins January 15th and lasts for two weeks through the January 28th, and dozens of Newport Beach residents will be participating, their promotional menus and discounted pricing on their menus, and it's a real great opportunity to explore the wonderful restaurants we have in Newport Beach. So mark your calendars, January 15th through 28th, and dine, at dynnb.com is where you can find out more information. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the dates for the next forum, airport forum, and the Aviation Committee. Dave, do you have those handy?
Our next Aviation Committee meeting is the second Monday of February, just February 12th, and as just a reminder, we meet at 4:00 in the community room next door. We'll also be putting up on our website a listing of at least three different forums that will be open to the public, and those three forums will focus on aspects of the county's perspective on different airport issues, including how they allocate slots per the access plan. One will be about just how they monitor noise and how that, how that occurs and is released to the public, and then their perspective on the settlement agreement. So those are going to extend on a couple of Fridays in the end of this month, one in Jan, one in February, and now one in March.
Thank you, Dave. I also want to add that I've asked the city manager, Dave, to report out to us and to the community the steps that the city has taken and is taking to address the Next Gen Flight Path issue, as well as to report out the recently negotiated settlement agreement. And I want to encourage you to pick up the press release in the back of the room that was prepared regarding the settlement agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Former excellent mayor and now regular councilman Muldoon?
I could use a fiber joke here, but I won't. No comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protim O'Neill?
Yep, just a few. A few weeks ago, I was able to present a proclamation on behalf of the city to Orville Marlet, who turned 100 years old, and when I asked him what the most amazing thing was he saw in those 100 years, he said, "Flight, actually, airplanes." And so, and then I'd just say, we all got to attend the Central Avenue Dock dedication. We attended George Murdoch's retirement. I hope he is enjoying it and not watching this meeting tonight. And my family was able to attend the family fun night over at Marina Park, which was phenomenal, great attendance, and kudos to everyone involved in the boat parade. And then on Thursday, my remarkably well-attended office hours at Newport Coast Community Center at 8:00 AM. Thanks.
Thank you. And myself, I have none because of the great work that preceded me, so I will leave it at that. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. All right, are there any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Councilman Piattar?
Number seven, please.
And Councilwoman Dixon?
I have none.
Councilman Hurdman?
I have none.
Councilman Muldoon?
I have none.
And Mayor Protim O'Neill?
I have none.
And I have none.
Mr. Mayor, before you move any action on that, staff is recommending that item number five be continued. That is an issue where we have a, we have a legal thing we need to explore a little bit further. That's the final track map for the residential condominium development at 3303 and 3355 Via Lido. And just as an early reminder, if anyone's here for a non-consent item, that is our public hearing on the appeal of the Lido Marina Village Parking Management Plan Amendment, the major, major player at DJM had a home involved in the Montecito flooding, so, and I apologize, I confused that with Monterey, he's, but he has a home in Montecito, and he's taking care of that tonight. So he has asked that that be continued until two weeks from now, and I believe that is also consistent and okay with the appellant, who is Electra Cruises. So just again, notification that that item will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do.
Mayor Protim O'Neill?
With number seven being pulled by Councilman Piattar, and number five being continued at staff recommendation, I move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now we need to go to public comments on the consent calendar. Please come up and speak.
This one on? Ready to go? I'm the current resident and owner of two houses in Newport Heights. I'm here tonight to-
Can you tell us your name, please?
Sharon Corson.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to alert my fellow Newport Beach residents to the existence of the improper and scandalous practices of a well-known commercial business in our community area. Hopefully, I will assist my fellow Newport Beach family in avoiding being victimized as well.
Ma'am, if this is a, something that's not on the consent calendar, then you come up in just a little bit and speak.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Does this relate to a consent calendar item?
No.
So you'll come up in just a few minutes to speak. Now's not the time for that.
I'm early?
Yeah, you're a little bit early. Thank you.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I did want to speak on consent calendar item number four, which Councilman Piattar already spoke about at the study session. This involves a wall abutting a sidewalk at the corner of Avocado and Pacific Coast Highway. The wall causes the sidewalk to become very narrow, it causes public utilities, such as the traffic control box, to be pushed out well into the sidewalk, the vents you can see here. I think anybody in the world would think this intersection would be more attractive, more friendly to the public if the wall was not where it is now, and the only reason we would think it should be there is we would think, ah, the property owner, that must be their right to have it there because that's on their property, but the staff report is telling us it's actually not on the property owner's property, it's on the public property, and we're being asked to approve this and put something in the deed that apparently, we haven't actually seen the language that's going into the deed, will give the property owner, who happens to be the Irvine Company, apparently a perpetual right to keep their sidewalk in, their wall in our public sidewalk. I would think, at the very least, you would want to see the language that's going into that and make sure that if this wall was ever reconstructed, the property owner could not put it back where it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none. I would like to, yes, I think we're going to please vote on the consent calendar.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, we'll now talk about pulled item from Councilman Piattar. Item number six? Seven, sorry?
One of those numbers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was for a contract for waste disposal services. We have two vendors, and we're giving it to the high bidder rather than the low bidder. Now, Dan, you gave me a little fact sheet right before we started. So you scored the, the two vendors, one of them's Roberts, one of them's Ware Disposal. You scored Ware Disposal's very low on the project approach and methodology section, but their price was better by the tune of $35,000 a year times five years, so, you know, $175,000 in the course of the contract, not counting the CPI increases. Can you explain why their project approach and methodology is so important that we should not go with the low bidder?
Yeah, I wasn't on the panel myself, but my understanding is that there were, you know, while they met the minimum requirements of the bid, it wasn't clear that they had the equipment that would, they didn't detail out what sort of equipment they had to meet the specifications. They didn't demonstrate an understanding of, you know, where the trash was to be delivered. There were just a number of holes that didn't demonstrate a really, you know, understanding that they, you know, were going to be able to deliver on the project, so-
But this isn't rocket science, though, right? This is, for the benefit of those that didn't hear it before, it's- This is, for the benefit of those that didn't hear it before, it's all hand labor. They take out the trash can, they empty the trash can liner and put in a new liner, and they do this on however many hundreds that we have around the city, the beach, and everything else. And the equipment is a flat bed with stake sides that they can carry the trash in. This isn't like a special trash truck, right?
In general, it's a one-ton, ton and a half truck with a compactor body. They could do it theoretically with a stake bed truck, but—
But basically, it's a pickup-based truck.
Yes, relatively light truck.
And then you said in the scoping session earlier, too, you explained that the trash is, or that you negotiated the scope down because the number of cans changed because you associated those with a different contract. So you didn't bother to talk to the low bidder on renegotiating their price to see if they'll still come in $35,000 a year under Roberts. Right?
Correct.
And so my proposal, counsel, is, you know, I think we ought to go with the low bid. The technical side is just not that technical, and if Ware decides that they can't do it, then, you know, let them back out. So my suggestion is, is that we direct staff to go with the low bidder, assuming that they can negotiate a price commensurate with a reduction of scope, and that they can satisfy the, you know, showing them exactly which trucks. And if for some reason Ware either decides they don't want to do it, or they can't justify it, then staff would not come back to us. They would then go ahead and issue the contract to Roberts. And that would be my motion.
Thank you. Any council comments on this? Seeing none, I'll put it out to the—
We have a second. Whoa, sorry.
All right, is there anyone to second this motion?
Yeah, I'll second for second discussion. Let's do public comments and then come back and discuss it more.
Okay. All right, now we can go to public comments, please.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I wonder if the staff could confirm if Roberts is the current incumbent that empties the trash containers at the Mariners Library? Because I've seen the little compactor truck show up there, and I think it had their name on it. And I just wanted to mention, despite the detail that we've heard, that those containers are just like the kind you used to buy at the hardware store for a residential home. Whoever is providing the service there does not put liners in those trash cans. They're often overflowing, and the trash that spills out of them is not very well picked up. So I have my doubts about how great this incumbent is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. I don't see any comments. Oh, I see it. Councilwoman Dixon, please. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Piattar bringing this up. You've raised some interesting questions. It is an expensive contract. If I remember, it's about $4 million a year, but it's over the five-year period, it's about $4 million.
Two over the five-year period.
$2 million over—
Yeah. It's like four, see, we're getting the number, but it's like $410 a year.
Okay.
The $410K a year.
But it's significantly increasing over the prior five years.
That's correct.
Maybe we should have just a little bit more, better understanding. As Mr. Piattar says, it's not a technical specialty truck pickup situation. And just to fully understand, if we're not getting, I mean, I do say that I see trash around, and I honestly, personally, don't care for these particular trash cans, but maybe that's a city issue, not necessarily the vendor's issue. But I would like to understand a little bit more before we just take it away from the staff's recommendation, maybe just a little bit fuller discussion. That's, I wouldn't mind bringing it back to understand the process a little bit more and why we would, staff was recommending. I respect the work that staff has done, but maybe there's some issues that we can improve on the current contract. Thank you.
Are you willing?
So you're looking at maybe a substitute motion that we direct staff to come back after talking to Ware and filling in these gaps now? I'm happy to change the motion to that.
Mayor Protim O'Neil.
Yeah, you know, here's my initial thought was very similar, and so I had reached out to Mr. Pizzani and asked him generally what happened, what was the scoring based on. And the explanation he gave was very similar to what we had received earlier during the study session discussion on this item. And my thought process is basically this, that I agree Ware Disposal is a fine company. It's been in the city for quite some time, and it's done a good job around, which is all the more reason why it's so strange to me that their submission would be so lacking in technical understanding of what this particular process would go through. And so if that's the case, if that's, if what we saw from, at a staff level, was an application from a company that knows better and is not up to what would be expected at the Newport Beach level of quality, then I can't really, I don't think I can support, you know, trying to reopen negotiations on an item like this. I would, I'd much rather just vote right now on the actual, you know, the actual substance of this and support going with staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have any other comments? Councilman Hurdman.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that Ware's lack of attention on their proposal to the technical detail may be an expression of their honest lack of interest in pursuing this service with the city. Maybe they just aren't that interested.
Any other comments from the council?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, just to seek clarification, if we ask, if the motion is to, and this is a clarification request to make of the motion, if we send this out, is your suggestion that, or if we continue this item, what exactly are you asking to direct staff to do? Because we can't put it out, back out for bid. So what would be your request of staff? Yes, please, as the maker, as the maker of the substitute motion.
I guess I'm just asking, not to put it out to bid or rebid, I'm just asking for further clarification of what are we getting in this contract, this proposed contract? That's really what I want. If we have some issues relating to the quality of the service, is this, are we getting what we're paying for? That's really, I'm not asking to rebid. I just want further clarification on the quality of the current provider of the service that we are considering giving to this current provider, even though they weren't the lowest bid.
Councilman Abe, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I can answer on the quality of the service. I think we would give them a B. At times, they, you know, get behind on very heavy days on a Monday in the summertime. And in general, they don't leave a mess. You know, they do a lot of beach cans, like we talked about earlier, Marine Avenue, CDM Coast Highway, on the piers, around the piers, all the street ends up and down seashore and down the peninsula. They do a decent job. They, you know, take the trash that's on the, you know, and people put on the side of the city cans, but we don't notice a lot of litter or anything else with them. They do a pretty good job.
And Mike, was that considered in the evaluation as to the contractor's performance?
Not in the evaluation of the proposals, no. But Councilperson Dixon's question was on how good this contractor had done. They've done a pretty good job.
B.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah.
We deserve A.
Yes. We'd always prefer A and like to have them, you know, get up seashore sooner than 1:00 PM on a Monday, but, yeah.
Councilman Avery.
Well, my first inclination is to support staff on something like this, but there's enough kind of hair on this. It's a small item, then it's not, in a way, that I'd at least like to see a revisit and kind of maybe, you know, drill down on the contract and maybe the specifications and, I don't know, I tend to agree to at least take another look at it. Because I just, not clear why the one would be disqualified, just not clear on that. I kind of understand the sentiment, but I just wouldn't have waited it that way. I don't know.
Councilman Hurdman.
Is there a representative from Roberts in the audience this evening? No.
No.
Okay. And Ware is not represented either, correct? Okay. Living in an area of the city where I have trash, public trash cans at the end of each street, I'd just like to say that Roberts has done a very consistent, good job in picking up trash on the island. That's it. Thank you.
All right, let me clarify. I'd like to motion to table this. So why don't staff come back with just further clarification, answer some of our questions, maybe even have a conversation with Roberts to see how we can get quality of service that may be consistently fine in one area but not so in another area. So just answer some of these questions, so just table it.
So can I add one thing if you're going to make that motion, Councilmember Dixon? That would be to authorize us to continue the existing contract with Roberts for three more weeks because it is set to expire?
Yes, yes. That would be my, I would support you on that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Is, Councilman Avery, are you?
No, I'm, I'll hold.
You're done? Okay. Well, I'll play, let's please vote.
You can mark me down as a second for that tabling. Or, I'm sorry, Hurdman did that, didn't he?
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Sharon Corson. As I stated earlier, I apologize for coming up early. It's my first meeting, as you can tell. I'm the current resident and owner of two houses in Newport Heights. I'm here tonight to alert my fellow Newport Beach residents to the existence of the improper and scandalous practices of a very well-known commercial business in our community area. Hopefully, I will assist my fellow Newport Beach family in avoiding being victimized as well. This company's business practices have devalued my property and therefore potentially my neighbors, as well as potentially numerous properties up for rent or sale. It's been over one full calendar year that my house has been torn apart, to the point that the city inspectors cannot and should not prove due to the improper second installation of windows and patio doors, pardon me, that was unsupervised. The stress and high level of anxiety over this prolonged period of time has prohibited me from allowing family and friends, or I apologize, the stress and anxiety of high level anxiety over this prolonged period of time has affected my health to the point of hospitalization, plus, as you can tell. Most importantly, prohibited me from allowing family and friends both personal and professional visits and access for all holidays. Those are my drywall and tiles in the kitchen, bathroom, and master bathroom, bedroom, master bathroom, pardon me, the second floor patio cracked in half by the improper second installation. The demolition areas in the garage, drywall and lighting, et cetera, are just some examples of this company's outrageous lack of professionalism that continues to prohibit completion. Stockholm application has been delayed since the inception of the project, to say the least. Newport Beach should not be allowed to be a target. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Duffield and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner, and I'm here tonight on behalf of SPON, an organization formed over 43 years ago to preserve the residential and environmental qualities of this lovely city. And I'd like to leave, read to you the comments that SPON has asked me to give to you tonight. Has to do with the general plan update discussion that has been going on. For the benefit of the audience here and at home, I'd like to give a little background information. The city had initially considered creating a blue ribbon committee to look into updating the general plan late last year, but it was tabled. Simultaneously, SPON has been hosting community workshops to determine interest in a general plan update. I'm sure most of you know that it is going on. Based on the feedback of our workshops, SPON is confident the city should initiate a comprehensive general plan update and should not get bogged down in creating a blue ribbon committee. SPON believes this is a timely opportunity to revisit the process of the update and offers to collaborate with the city on this effort. We'd like to work together with you on this. As the council knows, SPON sent a letter in mid-December with two requests. First, we requested the city to embark on a comprehensive plan update. Second, we requested the city incorporate a robust public outreach effort for this update. A comprehensive update provides residents with hope for Newport Beach's future and would also provide certainty for project applicants with policies that reflect our community values. The city has changed a lot since the last update 10 years ago, and recent legislation has been passed in Sacramento that the city will need to meet, including addressing sustainability, environmental justice, climate change, sea level rise, and greenhouse gases. Attached to our letter was a draft resolution that we would like the council to consider. We've not gotten a response from the city, so I'm hoping that tonight you'll understand why I'm here, and we can learn what the next step might be and ask that this item be agendized for discussion at the January 23 meeting. That is something that we are asking you to ask your staff to do. For those that may want to be involved, we continue to host monthly community workshops. Please visit spon, S-P-O-N, hyphen NewportBeach.org and subscribe to our e-newsletter to stay informed. Together, let's move the city into a transparent, inclusive, empowering, and accountable policy discussion that takes a thoughtful look at lessons learned from the last general plan update and resident-based initiatives since the 2006 plan was adopted. Thank you very much for giving us your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Skinner. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. At the study session, I spoke to you about the expectation that our city administrative officials will follow the rules that you adopt, and I recounted a recent episode in which my filing of what I am quite confident was a totally correct, free appeal to you under your newly adopted Title 21 of the municipal code. That appeal was blocked by city staff using what, in my view, is a completely unsupportable interpretation of the new law. And under that new Title 21, the public is supposed to have 14 days to appeal staff interpretations of this sort to the planning commission and then possibly to you. But staff acted on its interpretation, not on day 14, but on day three, and today mailed my appeal back to me as if it had never happened. The Brown Act prevents you from intervening tonight on my behalf, even if you wanted to, but it does allow you to ask staff to place matters on a future agenda for discussion, and it even allows you to vote on that tonight. The policy issues that I see needing further discussion include these. Number one, do you actually want to charge a fee for appeals under your new Title 21 about coastal development permits? If you do, that will mean that every CDP decision in the appeal zone can be appealed directly to the Coastal Commission, which may or may not be what you want. Number two, do you want Title 21 to force appeals made under it to be bundled with appeals of issues under other titles? On reflection, I think you will find that there is very little reason to do that because by design Title 21 is supposed to be completely independent of the rest of the municipal code. Number three, which is a more general concern, when our city staff— Number three, which is a more general concern, when our city staff gives the public an unobvious interpretation of our city codes, such as telling us that you adopted a law that says that two plus two equals five, should be, should they be required to provide the public with a written explanation of how they arrived at that strange conclusion? Next, should the staff be allowed to act on such an appealable conclusion before the appeal period about that interpretation has run out? Next, what fee should be charged to make a simple review of a reading of our codes? And finally, if the appeal body, which could be you or the planning commission, decides that the staff was wrong, should that fee be returned to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move along here to oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I didn't request this earlier, but item for a future agenda, I was reminded, we just finished a acoustic study on the airport and there were temporary noise monitors that were put out and we're, we're expecting to report on that. I would like a, an agenda item for a future meeting to include maybe installing permanent noise monitors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you. No, I have no, nothing to report.
Councilman Hurdman.
I, I just want to clarify that, that I have asked the city manager to provide us and the community with a report on what the city is doing. And that includes the noise monitor action that we have taken, temporary noise, noise monitor readings, that that, that, just a complete report be provided to us and the community and also to include the details of the settlement agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon.
I have none.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
None.
And myself, I have none. And since my one and only, my first meeting where we don't even have apparently an item, maybe our city manager could help me explain that, why, what happened this evening?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was intended to be a public hearing and it was noticed as such where Electric Cruises was going, was, had filed an appeal of the planning commission's approval of a parking management plan for Lido Marina Village. As I noted briefly earlier, one of the principals with Lido Marina Village, Mr. Parton, what had, was, had his property involved in the mudslides up in Montecito overnight, which I was just reading before this started, the 13 people are killed now. It's awful. Lindsay's fine, though, thankfully. But the, he has requested and the applicant, sorry, the appellant, has agreed that if this was continued to Tuesday night, January 23rd, that would be acceptable to both parties. So that would be my recommendation for a motion would be to continue that public hearing to that point in time.
Any public comments on this item? Or what was it? Seeing none, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Madam Clerk.
This is the time for motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, I would like to adjourn. However, I would like to defer to Councilwoman Dixon, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We are adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of Bob Rubian. Robert Bob Rubian, a longtime Newport Beach resident and the founder of the Crab Cooker restaurant, passed away just before the holidays on December 15th. Bob was born and raised in Pasadena, joined the Navy after graduating from high school. He served his country as a CB during World War II and was decorated combat, a combat veteran. In 1949, he bought a home in Newport Beach and two years later took over the fish market on Balboa Peninsula. He subsequently turned the market into the Crab Cooker. Housed in the Red Building at 22nd and Newport Boulevard, the landmark restaurant known for fresh seafood, chowder, and bread has been a treasure, has been treasured by generations of Newporters and visitors. So much so that in 1992, the Rubian family opened a second Crab Cooker located in Tustin and that location also remains in business today. He was a businessman, carpenter, gardener, artist, musician, and songwriter who loved the sea and marine life. Bob supported a number of charitable organizations, particularly those serving families in need and environmental causes. He was also a member of Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and the Balboa Bay Club. Above all, Bob was a family man. He's survived by his wife of 58 years, Helen, his daughter and son-in-law, Ronnie and James Wasco, and his son Robbie Rubian, and three grandchildren. He was predeceased by his son John and services have been held. We should note that the recent adjacent construction caused by structural damage to the Newport Beach Crab Cooker, but the Rubian family fully intends to rebuild the restaurant onsite and continue Bob's legacy for generations to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Oh, my God.